Okay.
Back online?
Yep.
Um, no decision made in closed session? Anything else for this topic?
No. Anything else you need me for, for the rest of the day?
You could say and help us do the budget more.
No. No, no, no.
Thanks, Todd.
Good luck.
Yeah, have a good day.
You too. Alright.
We should probably call Donna over this one.
Yeah, let's do that. Um, what's her number?
Five hundred.
You wanna call Donna? Five hundred?
Do you wanna get a budget here too?
I think it's just Donna for this, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't think he does a VCs.
You're gonna call me now?
Hey, uh, we're gonna pour up to the vision plan. You wanna come over?
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, bye.
You just walk off, you know. He's gonna have to come up right away.
Do you want me to pull down?
Well, how many questions are you guys gonna have for this one?
None. We just...
Tell them, tell them to come. You can call them and tell them we'll be ready around nine. That's ten minutes. And we can have a couple minutes for a break in between if, if we have time.
Hey Doug, this is Jack from the boardroom. Hey, just wanted to give you a heads up, we're gonna be ready for you about nine o'clock. Alright? Alright, perfect, thanks.
And you guys saw the documents from a VCs in the packet? For?
Avis?
A VCs.
A VCs? Is that how you say it?
Yes.
Isn't Avis a car rental company?
Avis is a car rental company?
I think so.
I, I don't know. Prices are higher on the other recommended thing, but it looks like it covers more, so. Actually, we could probably do claims. This sort of stack of things. And then those two.
Mm-hmm. Yep, just like five or six of those credit card ones.
I'm gonna get this. Four sixteen.
Hello?
Hello.
Morning. Still raining out there?
No, just springtime.
Springtime?
Yeah, not like...
Yeah, I think it was raining heavy this morning. I had to
I'm writing.
walk Lucas into
Yeah.
school and...
Well, we are up to the VCs renewal information stuff, so.
Okay.
Anywhere you wanna start there?
Pardon me?
Anywhere you wanna start?
Anywhere I wanna start? Well, I think today, I just wanna, um, introduce what a VCs is offering. Melissa does the enrollment with a VCs, but when she, I mean, she's back, but she's probably over her head. Um, but we need to get some decisions made for open enrollment. It's kind of a two-pronged of discussion. Um, a VCs sent out, we currently have the L three plan, which we introduced last year. Um, they're also recommending that we look at the L seven. Um, with the L three, you can do a two-year agreement. Um, the rates stay the same, which they've been with, I think, the last two, three years. Or if we go up to the L seven, um, there's, depending on the tier, there's an increase. Um, from what I am determining or what I am seeing, the, um, difference is the progressive lenses and, and the payout for that. But I guess I just wanted you guys to kind of digest that and maybe bring it back to next week for an actual signature, so I have some time to be reviewed by all.
Okay, yep.
Um, for like a single employee, it would go about three dollars a month. For, uh, employee spouse, it would go at six. For employee children, it would go about six.
That's, that's all in the back.
And then the family is about eight. Yeah, so it's a little bit of an increase, but again, it's all 100% employee paid. So I think that that is also the difference, so.
Yeah.
Maybe just giving an employee some time to digest that. I'm not sure what the right answer is. If the benefit would be enough to...
Is this, is this stuff that's been shared with employees already or not?
It's on the public drive, but we have not had a formal conversation with employees. I think there are a handful that are aware of that.
Well, are they, are they going to be reviewing it before we take action or after?
Well, that's kind of the question on how how do you want that to proceed? How do you want that to happen? Um, historically, the decision's been made and we have open enrollment. I don't think in the past that there's been, there's been a few years. Again, I'm a little green. Haven't been involved with, because it's a two-year contract, so it's...
Four-year contract?
This one you could offer four years if you go up to L seven. I can surely send it out in an email. I guess then I don't know how the decision will be made. What, you know, what, what kind of input you maybe will get. Maybe that would be the best. I don't know if it was capable to get consensus.
If you're gonna get my name, but I do, do you?
I don't know. I, I, yeah, again, I don't know.
Do I sign this with today's date or?
Do you want me to send it out to the employers?
I just started.
And again, turnaround, we're at crunch time for open enrollment.
Well, and that's, that's what I was thinking, so.
Pardon me?
I was, I had that in my head that everyone wants decisions, maybe? So that stuff can be prepared for open enrollment.
You should just make a decision and get it over with.
Well, if you're, I, I think give it a week. I think we've presented the information. I can put it out the best that I can, but I think ultimately you hopefully make the decision.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can think on it, I guess, but yeah, we need to make a decision.
I just, since it came last week, I thought we better get it in front of us so that there's some time to digest it, think about it. It will have to come back to you guys to make a decision and then we can offer it during open enrollment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks, Tim. Is everyone good to keep going or you want a couple minute break? Okay.
I'm gonna have to tell Melissa to come in.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a two-minute break. I'll be...
Oh, God.
Well, I think we're getting caught up.
In rain?
Yeah.
It's dusty out there.
Yesterday was, when I grew out with roses. Very, very dusty.
Blowing.
I'd get lost in the view of yesterday and dust. Little trees out there today. There's no oyster.
Really?
Uh, there's none underneath the trees.
Wow.
Big little old brown spartan.
Alright. Um, next on our agenda, Doug, you had requested discussion with Kasuth County staff dealing with duties, dealing with health insurance administration.
Yeah, I'll begin. Um, I guess first of all, just to kind of put a couple duties just in front of you. Uh, I usually take care of the fund as far as receipts and expenditures. Uh, make sure that the balances are being corrected. Donna, she takes care of enrollment. And Melissa, she takes care of payroll. And, um, together, through communication amongst us three, uh, we have been able in the past to, uh, take care of health insurance. But these last couple of months has just created uh, so much confusion for us. We need the board supervisors to tell us, to answer uh, some things so that we can continue our duties. And the first question we have is, what Wellmark plan does the board supervisors intend to use for fiscal year 2025?
What do you mean? What plan?
What Wellmark plan does the board supervisors plan for, to be used for Kasuth County benefits? Health insurance benefits for fiscal year 2025?
The decision, one we voted on was thousand dollar deductible for single, two thousand dollar deductible for family, fifteen hundred dollar out-of-pocket max for single, three thousand out-of-pocket max for family.
Seventy-five thousand?
Yeah, seventy-five thousand stop loss. Um, any other questions?
Was there a motion made by the board?
Yes, there was.
What date was that? February twenty-seven?
That would seem right, because I was gone, so that, and that's when I was on vacation, so that would be great.
Uh, Michelle sent the email to all of us on three, six at ten thirty-five AM with the final alternate.
So February, the February twenty-seven minutes, what is reflected in the February twenty-seven minutes is the desire of the board supervisors?
So you want me to read the motion? From the twenty-seven?
Yeah, you, you can. I just got to it as well.
Okay, motion by Wachter and second by Matt to increase the Wellmark health insurance deductibles to one thousand, two thousand, out-of-pocket maximums to fifteen hundred, three thousand, and the stop loss to seventy-five thousand, and to include Prudence RX. And the motion didn't pass.
Yep.
So that, that is the board's intention. Okay, thank you. Last week, the board made a motion about employee uh, contributions to the health insurance self-insurance fund. When are those contributions to begin?
The new fiscal year.
The ambiguous motion is not listed. Okay, the, the motion did not contain what, it just says that it will, uh, employees, motion by having the employees pay two hundred fifty dollars per month towards the premium of their health insurance.
All part of the new budgets.
Yeah.
The budget takes place July first.
Okay, thank you. Who does the board supervisors, who do you desire to have speak with Wellmark? Wellmark's representative to, uh, get plan information?
It's typically Donna.
Donna and I. But that, over the last two months, that has completely changed.
I know you're referring to questions I have asked and asked for stuff. Um, I don't see any reason that board members can't contact representatives that we are, for companies that we're supposed to work with.
And that's fine. Um, if you guys, if you guys would like to do our duties, that's fine too, but it's difficult for do, for us to do our job when plans are changing, plans are being submitted. We don't even have, we don't even have the proper documents to begin renewing health insurance for July. And who is supposed to take care of that?
We haven't gotten the fin, we haven't gotten the final rates from Wellmark yet, so that's in
Is that in the process though?
As far as I know, yeah.
Well, would you, would the board like somebody to be the spokesman for Kasuth County or would, I mean, who is supposed to be doing that? Who is the board's desire?
I mean, I think Kyle, you, if you make calls like that, you should do it in the presence of Doug. We should, we should not make those on our own. If you're gonna, if you're gonna call, well, that should be done, because he's the administrator of insurance, we are. It's the call and then, and not relay that information to him. Is, is not, I mean, he has to know it's what you're called in for and what you're talking to about, but I, it should be done.
Well, the binder agreement, our binder agreement does have authorized health plan representatives, and Doug and I are listed.
Right.
I think the confusion is, we don't wanna overstep and we don't wanna overburden Wellmark by multiple questions. And, you know, right now, we're down to where the binder agreement historically, some years it's been January, some years it's been April where it's signed. But with a significant change, I think that's adding the confusion, because we don't have that material ready to go in order to communicate with employees. So when we look at what our authorized plan representatives, we need to either have that clear or we need to update that.
Agreed. So I think in the future, the board should always work through Doug and Donna and not be calling Wellmark on our own. It should be done. Either give them the questions or really do it in their presence, so they have the same information and not getting calls from two or three different people. It just confuses everyone.
I guess I do more work than just sitting in the boardroom here. I can't speak for anyone else, but when I have questions, I'm gonna ask them.
But you have to do it, you're, you don't administer. You need to pick up the phone and call them. You get, you need to do it with their knowledge. You got, they need to know if you're calling and what you're talking to them about, and then you better get with them. If you wanna administer, then let's give, let, let, we'll give the administration dues to you if you wanna do it. I'm sure they will give it up.
And the questions I was asking are not administering it. That's very different.
Still, communication is the key to getting things done effectively, efficiently, effectively, not people just run around making phone calls and talk to people on their own.
Can, can I ask a question? Why don't you wanna call with them? What's the reason to wanna call by yourself and not with them?
I don't know that there's any reason I can't call with them, but I'm not gonna drive telephone every time I wanna make a phone call. I mean, that's not realistic.
Beyond conference call?
Well, realistically, you're not supposed to act by yourself and not with the group either. You're supposed to be a board supervisor, not just one. Four of us could just all stay home if you're gonna make all the decisions.
What, what actions have I made by making phone calls?
Well, you come with the information that's not shared until we get to the meeting and then we don't have all the information that you get over the telephone.
There were final rates sent last week. There were final rates sent for Kasuth County insurance, but they are not the final rates for what was just spoke about. The, the insurance policy that is covered in Kasuth County. There were final rates. Somebody ordered them.
Which plan was that for?
The, it was your high deductible health plan.
I didn't ask for final rates for that.
Why didn't Michelle send them to everybody then? Because that's what we receive, whether you know it or not.
No, I never got that.
That was final rates last Monday afternoon that you brought to the board and there were motions made last week about that particular policy.
She had sent the
If you look at those.
On four eight, she sent, she sent rates to you, all the supervisors, and Carvin copied her team on that. That's the last I have with rates.
That says final alternate rates. That's what that is.
What date, what date did you receive that?
That was what I received.
Four eight?
Yeah.
That's not final rates.
I don't know. It says final rates. It has a place for a signature. That's what happens with the final rates. Somebody accepts them for Kasuth County.
The subject of her email says alternate.
Well, I don't know. I'm so confused. I don't know what's going on. To be honest with you, again, there's so much ambiguity, no communication at all. And again, if you would like to do it, if the board supervisors would like to do all that administration, you guys can. I'm just asking who, who does the board supervisor want to be that? Who, who does a board supervisor's desire to speak with Kasuth County's Wellmark representative? Be the, be the person who brings information to the board? Is, is the liaison between the self-insurance fund and our policies?
I think it's you and Donna.
Is that the board's desire?
It's my desire.
Yes.
If we want, if we make that for a motion, I would be happy to do that.
Well, if it is our responsibility, I would appreciate them to be part of conversations that that talk about policies and have the opportunity to affect the fund. We have open enrollment coming out, which means we gotta, we gotta make some decisions. And we will, I will be on the phone with Michelle and getting this, so that next week we can go through some, I hope anyway, that next week we can go through some of the processes to get this taken care of. Uh, we need to have open enrollment. Donna, could you speak more about, uh, what is needed for that?
For our handbook, open enrollment, um, needs to occur within, prior, sixty days prior to July first. We've had it scheduled for the road crew on Friday and just because we can give them the information and then our open enrollment period actually is May second through the, we usually send a ten-day period. I'm thinking it's going to be very difficult to have that. I think historically, when you sign the binder agreement, it takes about three weeks for the summary of benefits to come back, and I think that's just a helpful document, so the employees actually know what they're signing up for. I know I've started kind of a question and answer. There's a lot of questions the employees have just on this transition and how it impacts and the, it's not just simply the changes in the amount. It's, it's a different, something that we, none of us have dealt with. So we're going to have to have that in crunch time to get that going, so that by the time they enroll, then we have to give it to Melissa, and I know you have to do some things with payroll to get that set up. So the communication is, it's gonna have to be timely, because we are going to be having quite an interesting period. It's just a change and transition. I think we can do it, but we need to do it correctly. There's enough angst amongst employees.
And along with that, we need a summary of benefits coverage. Is that correct, Donna?
Yeah, and that takes about three weeks to, to, that's what I was told last year, because I know I, I was asking Wellmark just because I feel like that's a document that we can provide. Later in July or by July, we'll get the actual coverage manual. Again, that's a heavier document. People tend not to look at it. We do provide to tell employees that the summary is something that we can give and will clarify what their deductibles will be in writing. I mean, we talked about it, but we need something in writing. And I, you mentioned Michelle coming up. Is that something you're wanting to do?
I had asked her that, if she could, if she was able to come up to explain some of this through, um, the open enrollment period, but if we're staying with the same plan, I don't know that she needs to. But
But we're changing
We're changing the plan.
Yeah.
Changing point.
We're changing the deductible.
But I think that may be enough of a change for employees to, I mean, to clarify. I mean, I'm just, I think there's, you know, a lot of unknown. I, I, I can't speak for all.
Well, I think we're also adding the, the Prudence RX as something in those here too, so that can be explained.
But that, that is really not a, anything that the employee or the, I don't think the employee's gonna see a change there, but other than a benefit.
No, they, I mean, they've got questions about it. Those need to be answered.
Well, that's part of Donna's responsibilities is she, when she gets that summary of benefits coverage and, and the policy, if people call Donna, she answers questions. She, she is the knowledgeable person for Kasuth County on, on health insurance. And if she doesn't know the answer, her answer is, I will, I need to talk to Wellmark and I need to talk with them and then I'll get back with you. The service that Donna does provide. And there are changes with the deductibles, uh,
Well, because
especially how it is handled.
One of the questions
Because of calendar year and fiscal year.
Yeah.
That's one of the questions that, to clearly articulate to employees, you know, does it roll, which, and that's our understanding, but we need to have that communicated. So I think, from my understanding, we're gonna have to get the confirmation to Wellmark that the binder, where this is the plan that we're expecting in the binder agreement. The chair will sign it. You guys will authorize the, the designated information to health representatives. I guess we're gonna have to see what that timing is before we officially set the open enrollment date. I think it's gonna be very tight to have it May second. But again, I don't wanna drag it out, because I think with the changes, I think we'll be having to make some significant effort. But again, I don't want to drag it out because I think with the changes, I think we'll be having to make some significant efforts to get that in.
And I'll have to change it and sort of shift it to everybody.
I think there's some things that you said we could start, but we'll have to kind of time that. And Michelle's available. I think it might be just a good thing to have her available.
Is that something, is that something we want to have her come up on May second?
Well, I don't know. May second will be the date. But yeah, whenever we, I think we'll have to reschedule. Quite honestly, I don't know that we can get it done in the shorter period of time.
And I pulled up my emails with her. It looks like she had responded. I'd sent her an email last, on the twelfth, asking if, if she, if, well, sorry, let me back up. I had sent her an email. Yeah, that was also on the twelfth because of Phil's question in the boardroom. If we could do a special open enrollment period. And she said she would confirm with underwriting, but she thought that we could. And then I said, once she confirmed that, I, to let me know and I would share it out with everyone. And she just responded yesterday afternoon. So I will forward that email so everyone can see that.
It'd be nice to be included in communication.
You should include, you should include Doug. Well, he's making a decision about the full orders now.
That's not a decision. That's a question.
But still, I don't like you're making those conversations about talking to Doug and having, but he's the one that, he should be the one that should be talking to him. It's, it's not your job, Travis. It's Doug and Donna's job. And then, and he, and he just finds out today that you've got some dates that we mailed to you and they have no idea what those dates are and never sent to them. It's always supposed to do their jobs when you're doing stuff behind their backs and broadside. Talk to them and.
You guys were all in the meeting when the question was asked. Who else asked the question that was asked by an employee?
Because talk to them and let them do, and if you have things, say Doug, would you contact who that we can, and talk to, let them get to do the conversations.
I think it's been helpful in the past and I mean, I'm, we're on the new, but just including or directing us to do that and we all have the same information would be helpful. With the open enrollment, when we set a date, historically, I think we've had the road crew come in earlier. I mean, the last few years, we've done it at the safety meeting. Then we have a morning session, afternoon session, and then I had offered up an evening session for like law enforcement and jailers and things. Is that still the platform that you kind of want to go with?
If that's what's worked in the past, don't change it.
Well, I know, well, I'm just wanting to confirm. I'm feeling a little like, um, we need to clarify so that we all.
I think as a, speaks for secondary road employees, they, they have no idea that, they have no confirmation that there's going to be a change in their health insurance. Who is to be delivering that? Who would the board like to deliver that message?
Yeah, she's down for you, Donna.
Is that the board's?
Yes, you're, you're, you guys are the next department.
Well, in the, the past month and a half, two months has been, there's, there's not been any communication. And I just want to make sure that the board supervisors, that's what the board would like. It's the board's desire.
It's my desire.
You're the department head, so sharing the information should be standard.
Well, I think he means for all employees, not just his department.
I think that's.
He said secondary roads.
Well, that was just an example, I think.
I, yes, I said, for example, I think the secondary roads department has heard a lot. There's just hearsay out there.
I think the confusion comes because of the dual roles, but I think just if we can have actual communication that is standardized because otherwise, everybody hears.
One person needs to be giving it to all employees.
And I think just, I think we've said this before, just supporting, this is what we're doing to move forward. It's not necessarily even discussing what's happened, but we've got to support it so it's clear. I think the unknown, I think I said this last week, the unknown is worse than actually the event.
Well, I will start working on getting that health renewal, health insurance renewal going. And hopefully, we can get that approved next week and we move forward from that. Thank you. I don't have any other further questions. I don't, Donna, I think it's Melissa.
Thanks a lot. You guys, we'd like to see what you do.
Thank you. We appreciate those comments.
Starting at two hundred and fifty dollars inside the forecast.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Melissa.
Yep, that's one of our.
Yep.
Thanks, Doug and Donna.
You bet. Take care.
All right. Um, yes, work within the road right away. We have three separate requests. One, we actually verbally approved and it was actually installed yesterday. And that would be the secondary road crossing with the tile, Tony Albert. They, they passed, or they went through the road there. We have received everything for that. So I would recommend that the board would approve that motion to approve that.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion?
Who's second, even, sorry?
Roger. And Josh made the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Want to get that done before the rain today.
Yeah, they, uh, Interstate Power and Light, they have two requests. One is for crossing, well, actually it's work in one hundred fifth street. They're going to be taking down an overhead pole and putting that underground. Very little effect to the road surface, but it will be work in the road right away. I would recommend approval of this request as well.
Okay, motion by Jarks. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
And then the last request is actually, they're going to be moving some overhead lines to cross Seventy Avenue. They're going to replace a pole and it's going to replace just a little bit of alignment. And again, I would recommend that the board would approve of this request as well. So across the Seventieth Street, south of two seventy, it's between section twelve, the lots created, section seven of Union.
Yes, motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Last group that we had, it was acted on, but I did not get it signed, so I need to get that one first. Get that signed, please. Number three for today. Thank you, Juan. All right, thank you. That's all the requests for construction ruled right away.
All right.
Uh, discussion. Evidently, there was another change to the budget over the weekend. And I guess, talking with Tammy, Tammy and I worked quite a bit yesterday to get that taken care of. Is the board going to be talking about budget today?
During auditor discussion.
Okay, could I be part of that, please? If somebody would please give me a phone call. Thank you. Uh, last week, the board with Metzger's landowner crossing, voting to leave it as is. And I guess I want to just discuss that just a little bit. Trying to clarify what happened, I guess. Our letter to Mr. Metzger, I thought was pretty clear. We told him he, he needed to repair that. And I, I highlighted, I think there's PDF in there with ten pages. But on March twenty first, we sent that letter to Mr. Metzger. And on page two, you can see where we, I guess we had talked about that, the board supervisors and the county engineer. And the drainage district correction, that's something the board supervisors asked trustee of, of the Drainage District. There was problems and with secondary roads, there was problems. And we offered, we, as in Cassoot County Engineers Office, offered solutions to it. And we referred specifically to the approved application, the permit. And, you know, the things that were violated, that paragraph eleven on the permit was that the applicant agrees to give the Cassoot County Engineers Office forty-eight hours notice of its intention to start construction of said project. And there was none. And then paragraph twelve says, noncompliance with any of the terms of this permit may be considered cause for shutdown of operation or revocation of this permit. And then it also states that the cost of any work caused to be performed by the county in removal of noncompliant construction will be assessed against the applicant. And we specifically conclude the letter by saying, when you plan to proceed with the corrections or have questions, please contact Doug Crouch or myself. I signed the letter at the Cassoot County Engineers Office. And we copied that letter to the board. And the landowner came to the board of supervisors and the board of supervisors said that, yes, it's installed correctly. I think that that was pretty much, he, he admitted that it was installed correctly, but the board said that was, evidently it was okay. So is there changes that need to be made to our policy, to our application? It is hard, it's hard to administer. We've had two other crossings happen since this one. We've not had any problems with them at all. What the, what the board would like for.
The landowner should not be able to pick the, well, he might add a relative to the work instead of, he didn't have a bonded contractor. For a drainage district, which is legally began with.
Yeah, that, the contractor should have probably been approved before everything was agreed to.
So the board would like to see that they're being approved, they, they need to approve a contractor?
Well, we've done it, we got that.
We probably should have the contractor specified and designated before the permit even comes to the board.
That they, that contractor needs to, engineer know what he's going to do to work.
Well, we have that paragraph in the, in the application that it's supposed to be forty-eight hours. And, and we say again that, I think it's paragraph twelve, that noncompliance with any of the terms of the agreement may be considered cause for shutdown. I have a concern.
It's hard to shut it down when they do the work and you don't know that it's done before you've done it.
Well, if it, safety, probably contractors need to have qualified people, educated people running equipment. And part of the education is being a responsible person in charge of the excavation. My understanding of any work that is done on a road, if I see that it's unsafe, I have the authority to shut it down. And that comes from OSHA and.
But like I said, in this case, the work will come before you even know about it.
Well, yeah, but they probably need to show that their operators are, have been trained in excavation safety. That, that's a concern of mine. The last thing that we want is to have somebody that is not, is not using the proper techniques for excavation safety. So I, I would like to ask for who will be the responsible person in charge on the job. And that person is supposed to be on the job. And my understanding is that trustees of drainage districts, when they hire people to do repairs, they are supposed to be trained in excavation safety as well. Just if there was an accident, I've been told, if there, say there's a fatality, OSHA is going to be talking to the people that own the facilities, so. So I'd like to add that to the application also.
I'd say cases. Roger made the motion to. I guess if there's a problem with this down road, I think that we'll have to address it again. We'll have to put that back in the land on site. This was installed properly and they, they said they repaired it. Well, how many expenses going where they are, I don't know. You're the board. You didn't pay for everything going to the road for a small trial. I don't know if we should do that or not. Another question I had.
Well, our policy right now.
That's our policy now.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's very expensive to provide all that for a few acres, but then.
So I mean, you're, are you saying that there's got to be a minimum area that's served? I mean, you're, are you saying that there's gotta be a minimum area that's served? I mean, the Iowa code is pretty clear, you know, that they, if they can prove that they need drainage, if the drainage is not adequate, they have the right to cross a road. There, there's procedure in the code that, you know, they can follow.
But does the code specify, I mean, they have the right to cross it, but it wasn't specified, the county shall pay?
If they do it according to code, the county pays for it all.
That's in the code.
Yeah.
Because it's our, it's our right away.
But they need to have a engineer design it, they gotta show that things are not adequate. They need to have public hearing. It's spelled out again in the, in the policy, if the landlord chooses not to be bound by the policy, then the procedures for securing such process shall be in accordance with the applicable sections of the Iowa code. Which is always...
So that'll be...
There's pay for the...
If you like the drainage district crossings, by the engineer.
Like the improve, normal improvement process, yeah.
Is that right, Doug?
Well, it's not. I mean, it's spelled out, yeah. The Iowa code spells it out, that they need to comply with the Cassuth County...
Provided, but then that, going back to the Metzger, they're going to be, probably should put her, you know, put her record that, yeah, it's a motion was made to not do anything by her, but if that fails in the future, then Metzger will be responsible for 100% of that of that process. Because it's still not properly, and it's not done by a bonded.
There needs, I mean, that takes an agreement, and takes something to be recorded, so that if the land is sold, show, show that type of thing.
We should agree that agreement with the landlord.
Well, right now, I think that, that motion, I, I don't know, if I was the landlord, I'd probably say the decision's already been made.
Maybe somebody's gotta make sure that going forward, that all those rules are followed, and that the landlord doesn't get a little buddy to...
Well, again, we, we tried to go through a process, and we had rules, and, and they did not follow them. And we tried to rectify it, so...
But the thing, you have that when you don't have a bonded contractor, do that. They kinda didn't follow any of the rules anymore.
We didn't follow rules either, and we let OSHA allow it to handle, I'm sure.
Well, we will work on, Doug and I will work on, we do, we do want to change, one, our practice for the policy is that we are providing materials, we are not paying for the cost of materials. If you look on page two of three of the policy, paragraph one states, "Pay for the cost of materials used to cross a road right of way, install the Cassuth County specifications, and pay $250 to offset against the labor expense to cut a secondary road." We would like to remove, pay for the cost of, and simply use provide, we have been providing material. So that will, that will then cover the policy, and it'll be our practice, the policy.
When did we change that? You know, years ago, when Crossroads and I did some time, and then...
March 14th of 2017 was when this was adopted.
$250 to cross the road, and we furnished the materials?
We, yes, there was a time, but we had, unfortunately, we had some situations. Intakes were being, were being placed in the road right of way. And the worst one that we had was when intakes were placed on both sides of the road top and the bottom of the ditch, and when the dirt ditch was burned, the flame actually went down the intake, went under the road, and came up the other intake, so the road department ended up replacing all of the tile that was placed. And at that time, we started providing the materials, so that situations like that would not happen again.
We had county foreman put plastic tile in the intakes recently, not within the last three years.
They have, yes, but they are, there isn't the tile running under the ground, under the road weight, it's not plastic. We have been just going and replacing those. And in fact, some of those intakes, they, I mean, I just looked at one that was replaced, repaired, and that, there's no need for an intake, the water will continue to run downhill. But the landlord likes to have a inspection for that, and he told our, told our road employees that we're there. But if the, if people want their own inspection on tile, they can put that on their own property, not, not something for the road department to fix, so...
That's why we didn't have too many intakes in road ditches.
Do you guys have any thoughts or concerns with getting a contractor before we approve the application?
We can certainly make the, make them give us who's gonna be the applicant, or the contractor on the application.
Then we can have it...
We can have them give us, give us some sort of a bond, or give us a certified check that can be returned to them.
Proof of insurance, at least.
Like, yeah, like we do with, with our drainage contractors, they all have proof of insurance on file, and they're, we have a approved list, so...
I mean, we can just add it to the, to the things that we need, that's, that's pretty simple.
But I think they should have proof of insurance before they dig through a road.
Yeah.
In this case, do, does Cassuth County need to? This was not done correctly. In our policy, we state that we will reimburse $250 towards labor. How does the board feel about giving Mr. Metzger $250 for his labor?
I think so, but how does that work? Or he said, "Don't just forget it."
Well, he didn't, he didn't do things, he did not do things correctly with this, per, per the application, what he agreed to.
It's a little bit...
You know, I don't know.
$250. That's, if you had any more background, yes, the county has it.
It hasn't been installed currently, definitely.
So, yeah, I guess we're...
I don't know.
I guess maybe they should, they should pay the $250 on that side.
I, I guess, one thing I would say is, in the future, if this comes up, I would certainly, I would, I would certainly like to be part of the conversation, to represent the road department on this. All right. Does the board have any other questions on that, or any other? Well, we'll probably bring a new tile policy for the board to, to approve, and we will add some things to our application, so...
Sounds good.
The projects off the Taitoka, the bridge project, they moved to the north side, and they're working on that, so they'll be driving piling soon. Yesterday, Maryland's down by Guttersport and Bridge Deck, so that's moving along well. We have our safety meeting Friday with the men at the nature center. And we had our waste management association meeting last Wednesday, it went well, and we have a financial assurance. When the audit report is submitted, we'll be able to do the financial assurance, so... It's really all that I have.
All right, any questions for Doug and the board? I don't have any, thanks. Yeah, we got 10 minutes till the drainage sharing. No way? No, about 10, I don't know, you might as well get it.
Good morning, good morning.
It's hot, isn't it?
What's that?
So it's hot, isn't it, right?
Has it been off the whole time?
Uh, it was on this morning, but then we wanted to close session, and I came back out.
Okay.
I don't think it ever reconnected.
Could have been, I wasn't paying attention.
Yeah, it's not wanting to reconnect.
Yeah, I'm good.
Is Dan here yet?
I haven't seen him.
No.
I just walked in to check if he's going down to take piss.
Okay. Yeah, we just got, we can't start till 10 anyway, so we got it right.
Any excitement there, nobody really been down here?
Not too much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Shouldn't it, it's raining fucking hard when we don't?
Yeah, I just, the one time, got out, walked out, there was just down.
Yeah, there was a couple of, I think it was raining really hard.
Has anyone said how much we've got yet?
No, but I'm there for a while, I came for to see anything, it was raining good. How's it going, Dave?
Not too bad.
Did you leave here late time?
Oh, yeah, I did.
Might, might be a good idea.
Been a long day trying to jump the
Looks like it wasn't doing too much right now, at least.
It was down hard when I went to take Lucas into school. Walked in and just soaked.
It came down hard there for a while.
Yeah, just before 8 o'clock, that's when I was outside. Walked Lucas into school, and then backed out.
That was...
Morning!
Wow, got all, got all the regular business done, and we're ready to go for 10 o'clock this morning?
We are on time.
Maybe, maybe, maybe.
See, Dan?
Yeah, wherever you want to sit.
On our agenda, we're supposed to have the, on our, on our agenda, you're supposed to have the commissioning done in five minutes. Just remember that.
All right, might start sounding like that, that fine print guy that you see at the end of the commercials, but...
Oh, the one listing off all the, yeah.
All the side effects? Now, that, that part should go pretty quick, I mean, I think everybody's in agreement that the work's done, in good shape. Open screen here. What are the rain projections for today?
1.2 inches, I think I saw.
Yeah, yeah, I saw 1.3.
That's probably north, though.
Hopefully someone spread out, rest of the time was...
Yeah, because the angle is kind of coming.
I didn't see.
They said heavy hail down by my place, so we'll see what, what things look like when I get home.
Was it cheese?
Yes, it was cheese tornado. Uh-huh, tornadoes and hail. It's not warm.
It's cold in here.
Yeah. I gotta roll up my sleeves here, because I put on my good shirt this morning, I have to work a sarsaparilla, and I'm like, I've got it? That's all right. We got new help. So this is Kyle, Kyle. He's been with us for about a year now. Yeah, came along to take some notes and get that added into. So everybody been hitting the fields harder these last few days?
I haven't made it up my yard.
I'm old. You did already?
Yeah.
Oh man. How'd that feel? It was all right. Put the old seatbelt on thirty years. Yeah. You do it with the seatbelt? That's funny, you got, you got the old wood stack on it or something then?
Yeah.
Yep.
I like mowing better than following the snow.
It's the weather that.
We do have ten o'clock, so. Are you guys ready?
Yep.
Zach and Jeff, you guys ready? We'll, we'll start here soon. Roger, you, you grabbing the lights? I would entertain them, oh, let's tone that down. I would entertain a motion to open the completion hearing for DD sixty sub one. I'll make that motion, is there a second? Okay, Roger, second, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. I'll turn it over to Dan for your presentation.
All right, well, morning everybody, thanks for coming in on this rainy day. Quick show of hands, it's ten o'clock, so everybody who here have their coffee on their way in this morning?
Never drink coffee.
Never drank coffee, oh my goodness.
I brought mine with me.
I was gonna say, who here is on the tail end of the caffeine high dwindling down? Yeah, so we're here for the, we're here for the end of the project, this is, this is the finale. Um, so we're gonna have two hearings today. One among is the completion hearing, which is, which uh, looks at a couple of different questions. Um, so the completion hearing is, is the work complete? Is there, is there any outstanding, outstanding construction items that need to be taken care of? And then also, are there damages that need to be paid as part of that? Um, and we'll, we'll dive into those, those two questions a little bit later, but once we've looked at those, we'll close out that hearing. And then we'll reopen the annexation and reclassification hearing, which is looking at everybody's cost share of the project. Um, and this is, this is touching back on the pre-classification that we did uh, way back before construction. Um, but, but this is, this is where we finalize that. Um, so the questions that we asked for the annexation reclassification, are there additional lands that feed into this that we need to, that we need to add to the district? And then how will the costs be spread out amongst everybody? And then we'll close that here. So that's kind of the, the ten thousand foot overview of what the itinerary is for this morning. Um, but with that, we'll go ahead and jump into the completion hearing. Okay, so, so again, the purpose of this is to look at, is the construction done? Um, and then is there any crop damages that need to be paid out? And um, all landowners receive a table of what my estimation of the crop damages should be. Um, if there's anything above and beyond that, or something that doesn't seem fair with that, today is the day, is the last day that you can put that in. In fact, those, any concerns need to be put in in writing and submitted to the board. You can of course verbalize that here, um, but if you want to change, that needs to be invited. With those damages, those are only paid to the landowners, we were discussing earlier. Uh, but if you have something worked out with your, with your tenant, um, that's good because of course, oftentimes they're the ones that are taking the hit on the year. Let's see, the outcome of this hearing, this first hearing is we'll either continue the hearing or we'll close it out, at which point we release retainage, we'll talk about that a little bit more, but, but we withheld some of the construction cost from Zach, the contractor. Um, and once we close that out, we'll be able to release those costs thirty days after this hearing. Okay, so, quick recap on this project. Um, we improved the whole system to a three quarter inch drainage coefficient. In other words, if you are feeding water into that system, it will be able to drain a three quarter inch rain within twenty four hours. That's the, that's the size of the pipe that we put in place. We added some length to lateral two, and then we also shortened up the Minnesota lateral so that it extends just across five hundred tenth street, which is the road that is the Iowa Minnesota border. This new system is, is meant to provide an outlet, meaning um, this tile is deep, it's, it's uh, well-built, it's probably not going to take water on its own, uh, but it is connected to all private systems in the area. Um, and in some cases, we even left some of the original tile in place. And that original tile will now be the responsibility of the landowner to take care of. Uh, that's considered abandoned from the, from the drainage district's standpoint, but um, in some cases, we left them in place so, so that the landowner would have something to continue to drain water out of the soil surrounding it. Yeah, so that's that last one. Okay, so just as a, as a visual reminder, this is what the original district looked like when uh, when we started looking at this project. Um, and for, the key here is solid lines are where the tile lies. So solid blue, solid red, solid green, purple and orange. Then the dotted lines are the boundary uh, that surrounds the project. Anybody inside the dotted lines is going to be paying a shade of this. So again, this is what the original tile was set up as. Um, and uh, just a second here, I'll talk about what changes were made as part of the construction. Okay, so again, solid lines represent the tile. We put in a brand new main all the way over to here. Uh, of course, new lateral tiles. And then the changes really involved the Minnesota lateral and lateral two. Um, changes being that this Minnesota lateral used to comprise the red line, the yellow line, and a part of this purple line. Um, and what we did with this project was we took this section and rather than having it drain up north, we're now draining it south through lateral two. And then the Minnesota lateral was constructed up to this road crossing here, and then we stopped. Everything in yellow, we decided to, or uh, at, at the request of the Minnesota landowner to save on cost, we did not replace any of that. So that tile line will be abandoned, that will now be the responsibility of the Minnesota landowner. Any questions on, on the construction? You guys are all pretty familiar with this. I've only got five minutes, am I through on five minutes yet?
Uh, yeah, you're at seven.
Oh no.
Just to highlight, the lateral two does not cross the road.
Correct.
Into Minnesota.
Yep.
The lines come together, but they don't cross.
Yep, and we, trying to remember if we filled in the tile, I think we completely removed the tile a few ago. Yep, okay. So then, the cost of this project, um, and uh, some of the costs that were incurred anyways was the construction cost was a total of six hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. Of that, the landowners bear a share of five hundred ninety thou, five hundred ninety thousand and some change. And then the secondary roads pay for fifty-three thousand. That's of construction costs, the secondary roads also have an assessment that they'll pay as part of this, but any road crossings are paid directly by the secondary roads department. Engineering was two hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred dollars. And then damages were about a hundred and twenty-five thousand one thirty-nine, that's the damages that I calculated out. If we have any additional that we'll need to talk about today, that would be over above that. Okay, so, looking at this total construction cost of six forty-four, we withheld ten percent of that from the contractor for a total of sixty-four thousand four fifty-eight ninety-eight. Um, and if everything is, is good as of today's hearing, we'll go ahead and release that at the end of the hearing, thirty days after this. So that's what, that's what we're talking about, but. That's all I have for the completion hearing, um, do you have any questions? Any damages, with any outstanding discharge items, anything of that nature? I would say in public speaking to uh, recite your ABCs in your head or something while you wait for questions, but I don't think there's any questions in this case, so.
Minnesota farmers in agreement with everything so far?
Yeah, I had a couple, couple phone conversations with him. Um, he's, he's really not receiving much damage, but it's also because we really didn't go into his property hardly.
Right.
So, yes.
But he was all right with the, the cost.
Yeah, they, well, their, their cost is outlined in the agreement that we approved a while back. And they were happy with the construction and valor and stuff they have, so yeah, they, Doug called me as well, he said he had also talked to Dan, but he didn't have any issues here, so.
The cost went up some in the project month we discussed originally, so I was curious if he was still all right paying his share of the adjusted cost.
Well.
Yep.
He's, they're not, and that's not part of the agreement. We, we did both ask that question to him, and basically their stance was, this is the agreement we signed. We all, we all knew it was an estimate going into it. So that is one of the things we'll discuss here yet today, is where do those?
Additional.
Where do those additional costs go to? Because someone has to pay them, but the agreement we entered into with them is, is capped.
I was curious.
Yep.
Yep. Absolutely. Any other questions? All right.
Right, well, are we ready to close the public hearing then?
I think so.
I would move to close the public hearing for the completion hearing for DD sixty sub one tile improvement, is there a second?
Yes.
Under thanks, um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously, now we will, I will make motion to open the annexation and reclassification hearing.
You don't want to make motions for the completion?
Do you, do you want to handle that now, or all at the end?
Which one's that?
The completion.
To accept the project and release retainage and all that sort of stuff?
Oh, yeah, we can go either way, I mean, I, I think uh.
Doesn't matter to me, I think it'd be.
Yeah, the drainage needs to be released one way or another, so the, the next step is just the annexation.
A lot of times we accept the report.
Accept the report, pay the crop damages and.
Accept, accept the report, crop damages and release retainage thirty days after they. Yep, so I would move that. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks.
Release, accept the report, crop damage.
And release retainage thirty days after.
Good.
Yep. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Got your notes all taken? Uh, roll call vote please.
Plaque?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Quacter?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Any other action to be taken after the completion hearing here? Right, so we can roll right into annexation and reclass, so I would move to open the annexation and reclassification hearing for sixty sub one. Yep, you'll second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are open for annexation and reclassification.
All right, well, morning again, everybody. Here we are at the annexation and reclassification hearing. Uh, so we already talked about construction, this hearing is a separate deal. Um, oftentimes we have them back to back, but they can be at different times, but we're going to discuss um, the benefit commission report, which was the larger packet, was that mailed out? The benefit commission report, large?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the larger packet that has a bunch of tables in it. Uh, discusses how the costs will be spread out to all the landowners in the district. And also discusses uh, annexation, so any additional lands that hadn't been in the district before, what we feel need to pay a shade of this. So again, this is a public hearing, it's a chance to ask questions and, and uh, gain any clarity that we need. Um, and it's an opportunity to make any necessary changes to, to the report that's been published. Again, uh, if there's something that needs to be changed, we want to see written objections, but this is a good chance to of course, voice what, what we need. Okay, so again, there's two parts of this hearing, there's the annexation part and there's the reclassification parts. Um, we aren't necessarily going to close and reopen the hearing, but that's, that's the two different items that we're going to look at. So we'll discuss benefits, we'll have any questions, we'll talk about how the Minnesota agreement impacts this particular schedule. Um, and then we'll go ahead and close the reclassification hearing. And then we'll have a motion for annexation. And then we'll have a motion to accept the, the benefit commission report. Okay, so uh, the big question is, who's involved in this and what role do they play? So first and foremost is landowners, landowners are ultimately responsible to pay all of the costs. And then um, landowners also receive the damage claims, the damages that we talked about at the last hearing, they receive those directly. If you want to work something out with your tenant, that's fine, uh, but the landowners are the ones that, that uh, their objections have weight here, and because they're the ones that are paying for everything. So other stakeholders are the benefit commission. Uh, benefit commission is comprised of three people, one of those is me, and then two other uh, landowners within Kasee County. And the benefit commission looks at the damages that we all talked about earlier, and then also finalize these uh, classification schedules in here. So you'll see, you'll see the benefit commission noted in the letter at the front of the, of the report. Okay, so diving into annexation a little bit. Um, again, we annex any lands that are draining towards the district, uh, but haven't been, haven't been included or paying for anything up to, up to today. And there's not a whole lot of annexation with this project, but there is a little bit. Um, there's a little bit of ground here down in Ryan Farland's land that's been draining towards that. Um, then there's also some up here with this farmstead, uh, but not a, not a whole lot of ground. At, one thing to note, in the opposite of annexation, there used to be a large amount of ground this way that was included in this district, years and years ago. But as you can see, none of our tile feeds that ground, and in fact, there's a whole different sub-district that drains towards the ditch. So as part of the commission, and, and this is in keeping with all the discussions we've had up to this point, we decided to drop that land on the classification schedule. Okay, so uh, any, any questions on annexation up to this point? Jumped a little bit ahead of myself, but everybody agrees that those are lands worth adding in. Is there any other lands that we're not seeing in here that need to be attached to the district? Nothing so far, okay. So let's talk a little bit about reclassification, which are those big tables um, towards the back of the report that discuss how much each landowner pays. Now, um, the reason we classify or reclassify again is that determines the landowner benefit, or what their percent of the total cost of any project or repair, or, or any, any cost that's incurred on the district, who's going to pay for that? or, or any, any cost that's incurred on the district, who's going to pay for that? We determined early on in this process that the prior classification reports had some, were inequitable, they had some things that just weren't quite kosher, so that's why we went through and reassessed all of this. We were missing some land, we needed to add some land, we didn't have a mechanism to charge Minnesota, and we wanted to clear all that up. If you want to read about it, it's a fantastic edge-of-your-seat read in Iowa code, chapter 468.38 through 44, and then 468.65. Okay, so, again, how this works, we have a benefit commission, a benefit commission made of three people, the engineer and two other landowners. In this case, both landowners have been part of several of these benefit commissions. They're very well-versed in, in how these work and how to know about it. And then, when we, when we do our calculations, we're trying to make things as equitable as possible. We're trying to make sure that a fair share is as close to fair as we can make it. So, we look at, how many acres does a person have draining into the district? We look at their soil types. Are they well-drained soils that don't really need tile, or don't need it as much? Or are they wet swampy soils that just cannot be farmed without the tile? We also look at how close a piece of ground is to the tile itself, distance from the line, we call that proximity factor, and then we also look at an out-of-charge, which is, are you just on the very low end of the district and you don't need very much tile to service your ground, very much length of tile? Or are you way at the far end of the district and you need to use every foot of that tile that's installed? If that's the case, then you're probably going to pay more. So those are, those are the different factors that we look at when we, when we calculate this overall benefit. I always like to throw an example in here just to, just to outline how to read these tables, because there's a lot of numbers in here. But, more or less, if you're a landowner, what you're going to do is you're going to look at a given line in here. So in this case, we'll look at John Wayne's ground. He owns the northwest, northwest of section 1, 100-3. And, and the tables you see here, these two are combined, but I like to use this example in my presentations. So that's, this all has to do with one particular parcel owned by one particular landowner. You may have several different parcels in there, in which case you add up every single line that you have, that your name has stated. So that, that's looking at these four columns, or in our case, three columns. If we go over here, this, this has more to do with how much land is included and how much you're going to pay. So you see the benefit of acres, this is the number of acres that we feel a given field has that's included in the district. It might be the entire field, it might be a part of that field. We'll skip this column for just a minute, but we'll go over to this pro-rata assessment. This is important in, in that it says what percent of any cost you're going to pay. So in this case, John Wayne is paying a quarter, almost a quarter, 24% of any costs that are included in this district. But again, if you have multiple parcels, you will add up each of those percentages. This guy here is what that cost would look like. So in this case, assessment per $10,000. If we levy, if the, if the board levies a $10,000 cost on the district, this is how much it's going to cost you. And then, of course, if it's a $20,000 cost, you'll, you'll double that, and so on. But just, just keep in mind, that's, that's kind of an example. In the tables that you'll see, some of them say $10,000, and those are for tables that have to do with future maintenance. Others will have a more exact number, and that number is the construction cost, the engineering, and the projected damages. Now, it doesn't include interest that's accrued, and it doesn't include, let's see, publication, I think there was some televising charges, so there's some other stuff that's not in there. But this gives you a more exact idea of what, what's all in there. And then also, this is all stuff that we're, that we're required by code to have in there. We also throw on the cost per acre. So, you know, $2,400 divided by 39 acres means that you're going to pay roughly $61.54 per acre. So that's, that's just some added information.
Go, go through the pro-rata assessment again.
Yeah, okay, pro-rata assessment. That's your total percent of, of this cost right here. So, we'll look at George Washington. He has 0.3. He pays 30% of $10,000, which means he's paying $3,000. And again, if you have three different fields, you'll add up each of those numbers. So you notice these are all a decimal, .24, 26, .3. They all add up to 1, or 100%.
So, what, go ahead, is kind of explain how come he's in 100% class, but he isn't paying the most per acre?
Yes, okay, so.
That's why I want.
Get pro-rata. Pro-rata versus the 100% class. Yep, so let's, let's talk about the 100% class for a second. That's, that's one that I, that's the one that I skipped over. This is something that Iowa code requires us to put in, but it can kind of muddy the waters a little bit. So, percent class is just a way to compare everybody's cost compared to each other. And so you'll notice a few numbers, there's 80, 8.3, and there's 100. 100 doesn't mean that you're paying 100% of the cost for this percent class. It means that you are the person with the biggest cost in the district. So in this case, we're highlighting George Washington. He has 40 acres, and he had some kind of wet ground, so he is the 100%er, he pays more than anybody else on this chart. Everybody else, all these other numbers compare, compare that field to the guy that's paying the most. So if you divide out, whatever, 3,000, 2,400 out of 3,000 is 80% of this, of this guy that's paying the most. Now, with that, and we'll, we'll jump into this a little bit more in just a second, but every field is broken down into 40 acres or less, so that we can, so that we can kind of accurately compare these. Because like Jeff, your field is, what, 120 acres? It's, it's a big field, isn't it?
Something like that.
Yeah. Yep, so, so we took that and we broke it into six different chunks that are 40 acres or smaller. And that way you can say, okay, well, I've got a 40 acre, and you can compare yours to somebody else that's got a 40, and you can, you can tell if you can, if you're paying more or less, or how you're situated in terms of your actual cost. But, add any clarity? This, this is kind of a, it's a, it's an interesting mechanism that we throw in there. But, at the end of the day, if you want to know your cost, you're going to look at the pro-rata, your, your, your share, and then your dollars for every $10,000, or whatever number it would be. This is just a way to compare your field to other fields. Any other questions on that? Okay, so that was looking at an example. There's a couple things that are specific to D60 sub 1 on here. So to start with, we have, we, we talked about what, what tile was replaced and what tile wasn't. We rerouted a few things. So in order to pay for that, we decided to have two different sets of tables for a few of these, a few of these laterals. One is going to cover the cost of construction, and then the other is going to be everything, every maintenance action that's taken from here for infinity number of years until this is revised again. But, but we have a construction table, and we've got a maintenance table. You're not going to pay for both of those this time around, you're just going to pay for anything that says construction on it. But, the, the laterals where that's the case is Minnesota lateral, lateral 1, and lateral 2. Those are, those are the laterals that have separate classification schedules. The main, lateral 3, the, those tables are the same, they're one and the same, the construction and maintenance, because there's really no change between the original and what we put in place, in terms of layout. Okay, so, when we, when we started this project as part of our negotiations, we looked at what the cost would be to replace the entire district as it is. What if we put in tile all the way through Minnesota? And we determined that that wasn't the direction we, that wasn't the construction we wanted to put in place, but when we go to levy this, what we're going to do is we're going to, we're going to assess everybody as if we put that in. And then we'll look at the cost savings. Those will go to the Minnesota landowner as part of the agreement to have this all work out. Because again, he, he's not having the tile laid in his field. So that cost savings is about $93,700. That would have been additional cost if we would have went through that field. So we'll keep that number in mind, in mind, $93,700. Okay, so, the tables that we see here are calculated, again, on construction costs, engineering costs, and projected damages. There are additional costs that the district has, so those numbers will go up, but that's the numbers that you see in these tables. And again, we talked about how large parcels are broken down into 40 acres or less, so that you can compare those to your neighbors and, and see if you're paying a reasonable share. The agreement with Minnesota to the question that we had earlier is that their costs are capped at $93,333. Because this slide just looks at, again, what, what's the difference between what the, how the district was originally designed and what was put in place? Most of that focus is, again, in Minnesota, where it used to be that we had that red solid line that looped up into Minnesota and back into Iowa, and then the purple line also was kind of a short stubby line. And if we go forward to the next slide, we've changed that now, where the Minnesota lateral in terms of length is what's shown there. Of course, we didn't put new tile in for the entirety of that, just, just the southern part. But we also extended lateral 2 all the way up to Minnesota. So if I go, if I go back a slide, this is, this is how we're expecting everybody to, this is how we classified the land for the construction cost. As in, this landowner here is going to pay a share of the Minnesota lateral, and they're not going to pay a share of lateral 2. Again, because we determined that that, that would be the best way to go, to go forward with having an agreement in place, and what, how expensive is it going to be to fix the problem of where is water draining? It used to be that we had water draining up into Minnesota, and that caused some issues. And we'll jump back forward, what was actually put in place, again, was that, when we, when we look at how we're going to pay for maintenance going forward, it used, used to be that landowners here would pay for construction costs on anything in the Minnesota lateral. But for maintenance going forward, we're going to recognize that that's no longer the case. So now landowners here are going to pay for lateral 2. And only these landowners here will pay for Minnesota. And then lateral 1 changed a little bit, there's some land that jumped, jumped a little because we put in a lateral here. Any questions on the difference between the maintenance classification versus the construction classification? There's a lot of technicality here, I understand, but that's, that we're getting into. That's, that's the end of the presentation that I have so far. So, let's go ahead and get out any questions?
Want some lights on?
Oh, yeah, sure.
You want to keep them in the dark for this longer, or?
Yeah.
Jeff, you got any thoughts or questions as the sole landowner in the room? Okay. Yeah, otherwise, a lot of that stuff has been how we were going to split out the classification. It was discussed several times here, so.
Okay.
I don't know if any, I mean, like we talked about, and like Roger's question brought up before, how we're going to split those extra costs on the Minnesota lateral that aren't covered by the Minnesota agreement is probably the big thing to discuss.
Yep, absolutely. So the, the benefit commission, this report that we have here, shows all the costs in the, in our standard equitable manner. Understanding that, we're going to have to make adjustments for the Minnesota landowner based on these actions that comes into this hearing. So, after publishing this, we got on the form with the Minnesota landowner, verified, that that's the number that they're going to pay. And so, so we will, as part of this hearing, need to make that adjustment. And that's typically how you'll see that go in your classification hearings, is if there's an adjustment that needs to be made, like today. So, what, what we do as part of that is we recognize that the costs you see in this table, again, were costs if we were to put the district, construct the district in the exact layout that it was originally. Costs as if the lateral 2 was nice and short, and the Minnesota lateral went all the way up into Minnesota and back. And then the, the way the agreement was structured was that the, the difference between what that would have cost, which was a much more expensive option, and the construction costs that were actually incurred, those, the, the difference between those two numbers would be taken off of the bill from the Minnesota landowner. So if you look at, if you add up what his total is through this table, it's $178,000, something like that, I was looking at it just last night. And we talked about, we saved $93,000. So more or less, we knocked that off of his bill, right off the top. And that would come off of the Minnesota lateral, first and foremost. And any additional changes that need to be made would come off of the main tile.
But the biggest savings is off the Minnesota lateral.
Yeah, exactly.
So you're compensated for that?
Yep. Yep, right off the Minnesota lateral.
Also, if they do any improvement, Minnesota's going to affect that lateral more than any other.
Yes.
They'll, they'll still be restricted with the tile that goes through the road, so they can only build up to that size, really.
They can't go through the road?
No, they, we, we cross the road, so we have the jurisdiction on the Iowa side that can't. They, they wouldn't have anything bigger to tap into unless we did another agreement or something down the road.
Yeah, yeah, we give them a three-quarter inch outlet.
Yep.
They do have a three-quarter inch outlet.
Yep, yep, they do. Yep, they have access to the three-quarter.
Hey, I got a question.
Yeah?
What about seeding the road ditches? Other rain, you know, that's where there's going to be all weeds there when they cross the road.
Sure.
It was nice, pretty grown grass when you started.
Yeah. Can I remember, do you remember that? Did you ever seed that other part of that?
If I did, it was last fall, it wasn't going to grow.
Yeah, I mean, usually, usually the seeding window is, put it down in the fall, and it pops up this spring. But that's usually on road spec. So that's.
And Minnesota lateral, 200 foot wide, you know, a black dirt and road ditch right now.
True. Okay.
Yeah, they went dug that up after I was there, so.
Alright, so that's, that's a question.
Is that, is that something we need to coordinate with secondary road department to get that reseeded?
Yeah.
Probably?
Do you remember how the other, so we crossed the road here for the time we were doing that?
Three times?
No. Yeah, once on the, once on the west side, and twice on the north side. Yep.
So there's three places on our farm that, you know, need to be reseeded.
Correct. Okay, yeah, I'll hold it down.
Okay, sounds good. Does that answer your question for now, Jeff? Did that answer your question for now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? There's quite a lot in here to unpack, so, probably stick around. Okay. Okay. So next steps, I always like to throw some maps in just to, because usually the questions are directed at somewhere. So the next steps are, we'll adjust for the Minnesota lateral. Yeah, you have a question? Okay, yep. So that is just simply, per the agreement, we cap those costs at ninety thousand three hundred and thirty-three. So we will, you know, just, to me, just make a motion acknowledging that. And then I'll work with Marge, and we'll make sure that those adjustments are set up correctly between the Minnesota lateral and the main. So again, the majority of the cost savings will be off the Minnesota lateral. And any additional, we go towards that.
Do you know how you split that now?
How, sir?
How are you, like eighty, twenty, seventy, thirty?
Um, that's a, let's just look at this real quick. The majority of their cost, the vast majority is on Minnesota. I think in terms of the main tile, they're paying something like thirty thousand.
Yeah, I remember right when Doug had called me, he read off the numbers. I wanna say he was in that close to thirty for the, for the main.
Yeah, thirty or thirty-two versus the way they originally benefited was something like a hundred and forty thousand for the Minnesota lateral. Again, that was as if we get put in all that tile. So there isn't necessarily a real cost for that. There, that is, in reality, reduced by that.
So if they're going to almost?
Well, they're still, they're still using the main to the same capacity, but the changes are on the physical location of the tile in Minnesota because we only came across the road, so they have access to it. So they should still be paying for their access, but we didn't build that other extra almost half mile or whatever with the tile, so that's, I mean.
Are you looking for just a way to, to address that in motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's, what's a good way to, to do that?
Cause you said it'd be kinda clear, cause that goes in the record.
Yeah, so I would say.
Or, or what if we have you put together like a just shorter letter report addressing that and bring that back to us?
Yeah, yeah, so, so.
For review, after, after you have the numbers.
Well, yeah, to, to close out today, we would look at accepting the report with the revision that total cost would be capped at ninety thousand three hundred and thirty-three. And the, and contingent on engineer's recommendation on how to change that with the intent, I'm trying to take a shorter way of phrasing this, but the intent that the cost will come first off of the Minnesota lateral, or the reduction will come first off the Minnesota lateral. And then any remainder will be off the main.
You should kinda have percentages in there. Ninety thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at, well, look at somebody.
What goes to the main and what goes to the lateral?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know the way, I don't know how you put percentages in there without having. Again.
Future repairs are gonna have to go through this.
No, no, that's a whole separate schedule.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yep, that's a good, that's a good.
That's a whole separate schedule. This is a one-time bill and one-time schedule.
At least for the Minnesota lateral. Again, the main, that one's consistent. That one'll be the one that's used for perpetuity. But that's the one that we're reducing to or lesser. You know, when I, when I look at classification schedules and records, usually what happens is, they'll just, they'll just knock that, knock that number down to specific values. So we're not necessarily recalculating all the rest of the tables or just addressing that one particular field or landowner, whichever one it is. So like, you read through the records and you'll just see this landowner on these two fields, those numbers will just be crossed off. So.
Well, at the end of the day, the, the dollars that are in the classification schedule for the construction won't make a, I mean, they'll make a difference to some degree, but the dollars that Johansen's will pay will not come in the form of a tax bill. It'll just be private checks being delivered. It, cause we don't have the authority to send them a tax bill.
Yeah.
So.
So their interest is?
I mean, it's kinda separated because of the border there.
Yeah, and the, the other thing that plays into this is how do we apportion the interest for all the laterals? So that's, in a lot of these, what we'll do is I'll follow up with Marge with an email that just has a table of how we feel those different costs are split out. So in the case of, in the case of engineering costs, that is, I, I don't record how much time I spent physically looking at lateral two or the main cause it's, it would be almost impossible for me to set up hard differentiators between those hours. It's how much time did I spend looking at this district? So what I do then at the end of the project is I take that total number and I'll figure out this was, this lateral was about six thousand feet and this lateral was, this lateral was twelve hundred feet. And I add all those together and I say, you know, the total length of this guy compared to everything was, let's say, ten percent.
A pro-rated cost per distance.
Yep, so that's something that we apply to, to the interest at the end. The county keeps track of the interest, but I provide a recommendation after the reclassification hearing on what would be an equitable way to break that out. Still up to the county if you guys want to change that, but, but that's the way we go about it. So same thing with the Minnesota landowner. We can cap those costs and then I'll provide a recommendation on how to break those out between the different laterals.
Well, they should pay.
They should pay their.
Payment should have interest in it.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Otherwise, it's gonna skew the other.
It's, it's still part of the total cost, so, yeah, it doesn't.
I guess that's my point.
Yeah, sure.
You have to have some interest incurred on that.
Interest, televising, publication, and meeting costs. You'll need to get all those, you'll need to get all those from Marge.
Yep, yeah, so either way, I'll give you, I'll give you an idea on what's a good way to go about breaking those up and spreading those between different laterals. Same thing with, and again, with that Minnesota landowner, I'll give you a good idea on, what's my recommendation on how to, how to break that out between the two laterals?
Cause I'm assuming he's gonna pay with one check?
Yeah.
Two?
Two checks?
It'll be the two brothers.
Well, or, I mean, yeah.
It'll be two checks.
At the same time.
Yeah, they'll receive one bill, we'll let them pay that in two.
Correct, yeah. That's what, he said, he said he personally just drive the checks here and hand them to us, so. But yeah, he said it would be in two checks.
Yep.
For the form of action and motion, with the complexities here, maybe it'd be good for you to put that table together and then bring it back to us and we could review that at the board level and then give formal approval at that point. I don't know. I mean, we, we probably need to have some record of all that.
We need to have at least the formula on how you're gonna do it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's really what we'd be looking for.
Yeah, yep.
Because that's gotta go into the record.
Yeah.
Yep, so in my mind, there's two different ways you can go about that. We can either continue the hearing or recognizing that all the rest of this is in good shape, we can close the hearing contingent on, on seeing the formula on how to break that out.
Your calculations.
Yep, yep, so, so contingent on recognizing.
Close the hearing instead of.
But bring that back to the board, probably.
Right, bring the formula back to the board for approval. But the rest of it, I think we can prove today and do it over.
Yep, I agree with that.
Yeah, so, so the contingencies would be the agreement with the Minnesota landowner and having a formula on, a recommendation on how to split those out.
Yeah, on the cost.
Yep.
Not, not so much the cost, but how the cost is allocated.
Yes, yeah.
Yep, how it's broken down.
Right. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Marge, you fine with that?
Do you have some notes on how to?
Um, I just have a question on the Minnesota lateral had crop damages.
Yeah.
Listed, are you paying those or not paying those?
Those should be incorporated in the cost for that lateral as well.
Yeah.
We, we got into their field a little bit. It was, let's see.
Oh, yeah, it was, that was only a couple hundred bucks, though, wasn't it?
Yeah, five hundred and seventy-six dollars for a general two acres effective.
Five hundred?
Hmm.
Yeah, so can that just be a straight reduction on their bill for their ninety, whatever, thousand?
Yeah, that was the original intent.
When they gotta pay the crop damage, how you can't take it off the bill, I don't think.
No, I, that's.
Yeah, and, and we could pay it.
Oh, yeah, pay it back as a bonus, yeah. Yeah, right, yeah, that's good.
I don't think we want to deviate from how we do now.
No, keep the agreement the same.
Right, yep.
I'm fine with saying it, but I'm not gonna deduct it all.
Okay, that was a fair, right.
Yeah.
But they're not gonna get the, the five hundred and some dollars until their name comes up.
Right, in order.
Until the dollars are brought in, yeah. Yep.
That makes sense.
Makes sense to you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, any other?
Well, so, yeah, the path forward then is, you know, accept the annexation and then the benefit commission report with.
We got, closed the hearing yet, too?
Yeah.
Any other questions here for, or comments for the annexation reclass hearing? Otherwise, I will move to close the hearing. Sir, second?
Second.
Thanks. Any further discussion or last questions? Roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jarks?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes. All right, our hearing is closed, so now, action to accept, do you want annexation and reclass separated for motion?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so first, do we wanna do accepting the annexation report? Or, how would you like that worded, Dan?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, accept the, the annexation. Yeah, you can say annexation before that.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Okay, thanks, any questions, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jarks?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes. Next, wanna do the re, accepting the reclassification report with the contingencies, that you'll bring that chart and formula and stuff back to us?
Yep, yep, so with a.
Based, based on the Minnesota agreement?
Yep, yep, accept the contingency of, except, well, we'll approve the report with the, with the contingent on the following changes, that the Minnesota landowner agreement is acknowledged and reflected.
And incorporated, yep.
Yep, and then that the engineer will provide a recommendation on how to apportion additional costs between the laterals.
Okay.
No, I did not get that.
Hold that thought.
Yep.
That the Minnesota landowner agreement is accepted and what?
Is incorporated.
Accepted and incorporated, or just?
Just incorporated.
Yeah.
Cause we already voted on the agreement previously.
Okay, incorporated and what was the second part?
And the, the additional costs are.
Yep, that, that the engineer provides a recommendation on how to apportion additional costs between the laterals.
So and directing the engineer to provide guidance on, on how to apportion the additional costs. No.
Good question. That's a, that's a good one to remember, though. There's a lot of details to remember on this one, isn't there?
Got you out of space yet?
Yeah, exactly.
We accept a report, send a report to dry damage, correct?
Yes. Yeah, that's already been, yeah, exactly. But that was a good question on, does that come off the front end or does that get cycled back at the end? Absolutely.
Okay, can I read this to make sure it's correct?
Yeah, please read what you got.
To approve the, to approve the reclassification report, or what report?
Yeah, reclassification.
Okay, reclassification report. With the contingency that the Minnesota landowner agreement is incorporated and directing the engineer to provide guidance on how to apportion costs.
Add, apportion additional costs, yep.
Okay.
All right, everyone hear that motion? Okay, and did you second that one, Roger?
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call vote whenever you're ready.
Plath?
Yes.
Jarks?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes. Motion, okay.
Does he have to come in or can he just email us the report and accept it?
Just send it to us, we'll have it, we can have it on an agenda and stuff, but you don't need to come up for it, probably. If we got questions, we can deal with it at that point.
Yep, absolutely.
We need to put more cost on this?
No.
Okay.
Anything else that we need for action here today? You had anything else, Dan, or?
Hope to see a lot of water spitting out of that thing today.
Just gonna shoot right out the end of it.
That's right.
Do we need to continue?
No, no, we closed the hearing. Jeff, you'll have to go check it out and see if the water's running.
I look every time I drive down.
I'm sure you do.
But, um.
It ran, it ran over.
Oh, really? Oh, that's good to hear. It's good to hear there's that much moisture in this one.
Well, it ain't, it ain't helping no more.
It, it moved it. Sent it, sent it down the ditch. All right, well, thanks, thanks for coming down here.
Yeah, no, thank you guys.
Thanks for having us.
Here with us for the, for the project.
Yeah.
It was a long one.
Yeah, it was.
I never thought it would be a, you know.
You never thought you're gonna be here to see the end of it, right?
No.
This one, this has gotta be about an eight-year.
I think it was ten plus, wasn't it?
Or was it?
It was. Was it twelve?
Going by the project number, we had it set up in 2014. I started at the end of 15, and this was, this was the very first landowner that I met with physically in the state.
Really?
Yep.
Most complicated ones you've done yet.
Yes. Yes.
Have they gotten easier, then?
Huh?
Have they gotten easier?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I said it from the back right there.
Yeah.
Did I do it?
Yep, well, there's, everyone, you guys, you guys have been around the ranch and feeling, everybody's got a stick. This one's got a couple of things here.
Yeah, we're first in terms of most.
Yes.
Yeah, this was very complicated.
Yeah. Oh, no, we got one more complicated. We got lawsuit on title of this one.
Well, I don't, I don't know that I'd say that's more complicated, it's more. I would use it, I would use a different word for that.
Would you?
Yeah, it's not more complicated, it's, it's pretty.
I don't even know how to start talking about it.
It's pretty cut and dry when it's just not there.
Thank you.
The fan of tile.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Big piles.
Yeah.
You guys at the Grove Bowl there?
Last year, I think they talked about tip, funny?
I, I was there.
Okay. I was on the phone.
Okay, I remember seeing you there.
Was Terry Luce presenting there?
Um.
Luce, the tip guy.
Oh, well, it was. Trying to think what's his name.
The tall guy.
Partially, he's, he's one of the guys that will retire. He's a, he's the chairman of the board, but yeah, he's not CEO anymore. No, he retired.
Tall, gray hair.
Yeah, what I'm trying to think what his name is.
Oh, presenting on tip?
Yeah. He might be retired too.
Economic development for the Grove Alliance.
Oh, Danny Clouds.
Yeah. Yep.
Yep, and he has retired.
Yep, yep, he's, he's gone fishing now.
Well, he, he really was the, the instigator of tip districts.
Oh, really?
How he set it up. He was the one that did premiums on top of the tip.
They have, they have several down there.
Do they?
Yeah, they do. And they've used them, they've used them very successfully from what I've heard and, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I thought he had a nice overview like that.
Yeah, there's a lot of good information.
Well, if the state would have just done the tips like they were originally intended, done instead of deviating into.
Oh.
We have good.
Oh, jeez.
So I'm sorry, some counties kind of went overboard. Not.
Josh, you want to pump up?
Yeah. We'll be up to our discretion.
All right, well, thank you guys for coming down and we'll talk more later, I'm sure.
Good deal. Enjoy the rain.
You do.
Well, it makes you get bump where it needs to.
Yeah. Have you?
Yep.
How you guys doing? Can you, uh?
Really don't know.
I drove home yesterday from backcountry. There's people I work with. And you couldn't tell the difference in color, they ordered a little bit of this.
Beating up corn and soybeans again.
Imagine that.
Hey, how's it going, Tim? Winter jacket?
Well, it's not, it's really a fall jacket, but I'm a little chilly, so.
You're chilly?
Yeah.
Look at Chef here.
I mostly brought it today because of the rain, but I'm glad I brought it cause it's a little chilly.
All right, we are up to discussion with our auditor.
Okay, before I start talking about budget, I'll start talking about what's coming up next week. So, um, Dan Green was supposed to be on the agenda today for his monthly update, but he is in Des Moines this week, um, so he will be next week. And then we'll have quarterly reports next week. And so far, that's about it, except for our regular stuff, EMS update with Phil, um, and safety and wellness committee minutes. So, um, that's it for next week. Um, I did have, um, an individual contact me with an idea um, about how to get employee morale up, um, because they feel like they've been hit alongside the head, so to speak, with all the changes. So he thought, uh, maybe you'd want to consider adding an extra week of vacation for employees that starts after thirty days. So like right now, employees don't get any vacation till they've been here a year. And so maybe, um, for new employees that would start after thirty days. Or also, um, the ones that have been here, maybe adding extra vacation time. So that they get more vacation time. Just an idea that it might be a way that wouldn't cost much. I know it would cost for the jail staff and the sheriff's office because they have to replace someone when somebody's gone, but.
It would have to be more overtime.
Yeah.
For them, it would be.
Something we could think about, but can't act on it today.
No, and, and I didn't mean it that way. Just wanted to bring it to your attention that he had this idea and I told him I would pass it along to you guys. Um, then a reminder. Um, NICOG still needs somebody appointed to their board and so does, um, North Iowa Regional Housing Authority. And then I think like you guys all got invites for Cassoue County. Um, breakfast.
The intern breakfast.
Economic development.
No, not the intern one. It wasn't the intern one, yeah, just the intern one. Um, that I have to RSVP by and that one.
I think that was May twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I was just gonna pull it, pull it up on my thing. I, we have to have RSVPs back to them by the first. So, it looks like.
Twenty, I don't know.
Twenty-nine?
My calendar's not moving here.
Yeah. When is the twenty-ninth? I have done seven thirty, seven thirty at the Columbia Hall.
Columbia Hall.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Here too.
Are you guys?
I'll be there.
I have it on my calendar if I'm planning to.
Okay, so I will RSVP for everybody.
And I hope I'm going.
Okay, so Roger might be announced, okay? So I'll put Jack, Josh, Kyle. Um, Roger now, and I'll check with Cargill.
Yeah, that would work.
Okay.
Computation or?
Okay, so are we ready to talk about budgets? Okay, so.
That'll be the big conversation.
Okay, so I went in and made the changes, but you asked me to make it last week.
Wish I said it works at least from here.
Thanks, Doc.
I hear all them out there.
Yeah, that always, yeah.
Especially on this end, we can hear them out there. Better than we can hear you talking.
At last week's board meeting, um, and then, so I put copies of information on your desk, so you should have the changes that I made to the budget as well as ending fund balances for each fund. So what I did was go in and make those changes. And then move stuff back to pretty much the way it was before, cause you had moved, um, deputies to rural in order to make up. So I moved them back to general and.
And we had just briefly touched it with the changes. We'd have to balance things back out. Proceed accounts.
Yeah, so we, we did that. We balanced things back to where they were. Um, to put our fund balance about where it was before, um, after making those changes, it would bring the total amount of taxes levying on property at eleven million, five hundred and fifty thousand, ninety-seven dollars, which is a six point four percent increase from last year. And if you look at the notice of public hearing sheet, which looks like this, on the top of it, it has the three columns. It says average annual percentage of change. It has ten point six eight. Well, that percentage is the average of the three years, not of the average from one year to the next. So if you take twenty twenty-three and twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five, the difference is six point four percent. So that's how much it would be going up and that levy rate is a dollar and sixty cents. So right now.
On supplemental.
On general supplemental, sorry. The other levies stayed the same. The only one that's changing would be general supplemental. Um, because that was the only one really affected before anyways. That was the big change before. So, um, a dollar sixty per thousand would be a six point four percent increase in the tax dollars. And the ending fund balance for general supplemental would then be one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars, which is over twenty-five percent.
And it's still a decrease over where we're actually, where we were for twenty-three.
Yeah.
So we're still going down a little over, well, rather than that four hundred thousand dollar ballpark. But it's still over, it's still meeting the twenty-five percent that we talked about having as our target or minimum.
So, um, that's where, where we are sitting now. Um, changes can still be made. But I have to have it like today because we have to have time to get the budget, budget presentation put together for Tuesday's meeting. Um, so we, you can still do that. We can still make changes. I just need direction on where you want me to go from here.
Well, and this has just shy two million dollar ending fund balance for general basic.
Yep.
So that was the big concern initially.
And so i- if you wanted to make changes for the fair and economic development, we could certainly do that. It's not, and, and those are just one number, so that's not big changes. That just takes a matter of minutes if you want.
Fifty, thirty, and the beaver tails have been acts. Yeah, they've been calling me. Yeah, cause I end up with most of the beaver tails.
I know.
Um, if we put that eighty-six thousand back in the budget, we're not gonna deeply our fund balance by a whole bunch.
You're at one, you'd be at almost one point nine.
Yeah.
If you did that.
Just shy of a hundred thousand.
Eighty-six.
Yeah, and close to a hundred already there.
But, but it's, you, you'd be fine to do that.
I'm fine with putting it, putting those three items back in.
So you're talking the fifty thousand for Cassoue County Economic Development.
Right.
The thirty for the fair.
And the six for beavers. But you're, we're gonna make, I'm gonna say the end, we'll probably watch expenses harder than we ever did before.
Yeah. I I could agree with the fifty thousand for economic development, um. The beaver tails, I think our biggest concern is drainage districts and if they're not in a district, then I I don't, I don't know that it's that.
What if we paid out on that? What if we did three thousand instead of six? Wouldn't three thousand cover it?
No, well, it depends upon if they keep them in freezers too long and then we never know when either they come.
But that's.
But they populate all over, I guess is that the issue with beavers is you if they breed on something that's not in a drainage district, they move to drainage district. We took out an awful lot of beaver dams years ago and we're not doing it now. That's my point. We spent more money in.
No, maybe we leave it be for a year and readdress it next year.
The six thousand?
Yeah.
Honestly, I don't know that the six thousand's really gonna make that much of a difference. If we're talking fifty thousand back to economic development and thirty thousand back to the fair, that six thousand dollars isn't really good in the needle that much.
I think you're gonna save it in the end in drainage districts.
So am I gearing eighty-six thousand back in the budget? Is that what you're saying?
That's my, that would be what I would do.
Well, we'll have to have it on the agenda to actually make.
No, you don't.
No, you don't.
Because it's not a.
Budget.
Yeah, you'll approve it with the budget.
I don't know.
Probably.
I think you really want to save money, you're gonna have to do some bigger items. You're gonna have to make some choices that amount to something.
My only other thought was not giving them back the full amount and just doing forty to economic development, twenty to the fair, and then three to six. That would make it sixty-six thousand and eighty-six thousand.
Twenty thousand isn't gonna make that big of a difference at this late in the game.
Do forty, twenty, and five?
I think economic development has the biggest impact on the area right now. Um, I understand stuff with the fair. I do have other things in mind. I'll get to that down the road. That's not a today conversation. But I don't know that that's gonna make an immediate difference tomorrow. Um, economic development is a big one. Beaver dams or beavers, if we don't pay for them for one year, is it really gonna be the end of the world?
They're gonna end up paying on to, to the year and then bringing them to us next year.
So.
You're gonna get, get them some other time.
Yeah, so it's not gonna. The, the level of impact there is gonna be negligible, I would think.
Certain people it's not. I got a guy that travels seater every time I tell him to.
Yeah.
Well, are they in drainage district or not?
Yeah.
Then, then you're still getting paid.
And then some of them are, some of them are in cricks and he doesn't. And he's not gonna do it, but he's not gonna get paid for it. I mean, last year I called in cause the state wanted them out north of open by big six and you just went and did it. State's asking, the state trial, it was deep marsh up on the creek that's not in the drainage district. It was flooding the ditch.
I'd say that's something we could readdress next year, but.
So we're back and forth on six thousand. I think we need to.
I want six thousand.
Move all back a little bit.
Yeah.
Kind of, kind of economic development, hundred twenty, the fair twenty-five, and beavers is five, five.
How come? You know, it's that much.
Did we cut anybody else? Have employees step up or should, should cut? I think we need to, should cut a little bit.
So how much did you say for beavers, Jack?
Well, I think, oh, like one twenty, twenty-five and.
He's talking about, so a hundred and twenty for account.
Yeah, I got that.
Twenty-five for fair and then five for beaver tails or four or whatever.
Make a motion?
You can't make a motion, but. You don't need a motion. This just.
Unanimous consent?
I'm fine with that.
I'm not gonna say it's unanimous, but.
We're gonna make the compromise.
You three can vote for the budget.
Yeah, I'm asked when you vote for the budget.
That's that's when it comes down.
So what's the number you want?
I guess I already said my priorities, I think economic development's the biggest priority of all three.
We're one twenty five there, what do you want for the fair?
I don't, I don't see anything needed for that right now, with, I mean, there's. There's other things I have in mind, I can't speak for the rest of you guys, but I don't, I don't think that's necessary for today.
Once in half the county goes to fairs.
I think supporting the fair is important, that's not my point, but those specific dollars, I don't think are gonna. Change the situation.
The grandstand issue without support from the supervisors is probably dead.
I, I think we can support it in other ways. I'll bring some things to the board here in the near future. That would have options on the table for that.
Well, why can't, we're talking about the budget today.
We gotta do it now. We gotta make a decision now.
Talking about next year's budget, then you got things you wanna talk about, bring it, talk, bring them up?
It's not on the agenda to discuss, so.
What's budget stuff, you just said it says.
It's it's not directly in our budget we're working on here, no, it's not.
Well, Tammy, which one are you gonna take, we got three of us, you wanna make a compromise, one that doesn't?
Well, that's up to you guys to decide, I just need to make sure that you're gonna. Approved the budget, you're gonna have, the decision's gonna be made next week when you approve the budget.
Next week, so.
Well, and what Doug, what you, you said you want, you you got something for budget you need to talk about, what's yours?
Well, I presented the road budget to the board and it was approved last week. I wanna know when is your budget going to be complete, because the first thing that I'm gonna have to do is amend. The road budget for twenty twenty five. Uh, due to the changes that happened over the weekend. There was money taken out of, um. General supplemental to pay for the roads, and now it's all coming out of the road fund. So now that whole process has to be corrected.
You're talking about the insurance for the employees?
Correct.
And that's what we had to balance that out, we had to switch that back to the way it was initially, it's still same total dollars. It's just changing the location of them.
So you moved all the debt back to general basic?
Yes.
And you're paying the insurance for the road workers out of the rural?
Out of the road fund again.
Out of the road.
Yep, so then the trans. So then the transfers would go back up, yes, so it's the same same dollars. As it would have been previously, before moving the the health insurance back out. Because that's where supplemental was the. The increase, that's our only way to move the levy back down, as if we take expenses out of there.
But Doug's budget has to reflect that.
Yeah?
So it doesn't sound like the dollar amount's changing, it's just the fund.
Expenditures out of the secondary road fund are different today than what they were a week ago.
Yeah, because of.
Yeah, the location of the fund.
And it's the same, if you look at our budget too, there's numbers gonna be changed on the fund balances because of the different funds that have been affected.
So. I guess I wanna know when, when is the budget going to be passed?
Next week. As has already been published, publicized.
And if it. I mean, it's due on the thirtieth, is there a possibility that there will not be a decision next Tuesday?
That's up to the vote next week.
That would be nice to know, I guess, for me. Because again, I I have, uh. I've gotta start an amendment process already, it's not even a weekend of the secondary road turning in.
Well, now I don't see a reason not to pass it, because we'll make the cuts, so we need it to make to get it down there, we got, we got it down, so.
Okay.
Listen, here in Kyle talk, I don't know if he's gonna support it, but hopefully we will have three votes to support it.
He'll be here next week.
I believe so.
Yes.
But I'd be, I'd say I'd be in favor of having pulling those other ones down some, I mean, cutting everybody else. Seven, maybe like one twenty and twenty five and. Three or four on the beaver tails.
Would be willing to compromise with one twenty five to economic development. Twenty to the fair. And. Twenty five hundred and beaver tails.
Are you gonna be willing to do a budget amendment to next year to get more beaver tails?
Yeah, I mean, that's what it's gonna come down to, or you're gonna stop paying when we fill all the budget.
So what would the solution be, just take it out for this year and then put it back in for next year, and then have everybody bringing their beaver tails next year?
Then the next year you just have double the amount of money.
Yeah.
They're all going freezers.
Then I guess we'll, obviously, zero for beaver tails, we'll do one twenty five for economic development. Would be willing to compromise and do twenty for the fair.
I'm, I'm not opposed to supporting the fair, that's not what I'm saying, I mean. I I think it'd be to everyone's diligence to look through the materials the fair provided us and. Make a decision on that after we've got. A little more. I mean, they just, they just handed us materials this morning.
Okay, I gotta get this budget done.
I I know, but.
Like today.
Right.
Because I.
You're fine with twenty to the fair, one twenty five to the economic development, and zero for beaver tails, do you agree, you're fine with that?
Well, they're cutting everybody else, cutting everybody, probably cut. If not, I'd like to take, make that one twenty, twenty or twenty five.
And you have the ripple effect of everyone else that's part of that. Pool, so to speak. Uh, everyone else that's contributing money is gonna ask the same question, why don't they? Cut things down.
You mean economic development?
For economic development, yeah.
Think you ought to cut it some, just because we cut everybody else, I don't know. And I know they're important, but.
So they're both important too, take two hundred and twenty five thousand, uh, libraries.
I thought we had it all settled once. Now it's just up to Kyle to make his decision all by himself and leave the rest of us out, if that's what you're saying.
I'm trying to find a compromise, that's what I'm.
Thought we did.
I mean, I've been, I'm astonished to throw KC DC too, but if we're gonna cut. Because I think we need to. A little bit from everywhere, because we need to say, oh, this one's more important than these other ones, and not, you gotta do anything.
Well, that's what we look at with everything, we have to make decisions on priorities that all day long.
Do a little bit from everywhere. Then next year, you guys can, next year you can maybe move that stuff back up if the, if the, you know, the funds are ready. The, the new board can redo it, move to move things back up next year if you want.
Do we wanna try calling Carter, so we get? All five here?
Yeah, call him and see what he's, what he, what his thoughts are.
You want on that phone or just have me call him, put him on speaker? You wanna dial it, Josh, or? See if he's available.
Just go back to the. He's on vacation, isn't he? He might be having fun.
Do you read Carter's app with Carter's piano service, please leave your name.
Okay. Otherwise, we would have the ability to do. Budget amendments after the budget starts, but.
But then you're taking out of your fund balance again, and then you're gonna get yourself in trouble again.
Depends on what the dollar amount is. I mean, yeah, we, it's, it's still looking at the same dollars, whether it's now or later.
Well, three of us are agreeing on one twenty, twenty and five. Cause five and three was.
Originally, we were five, six, I don't know, we've been all over.
That'd be, game, quitting out happens regularly.
Maybe you should do that before our.
Well, they're dealing with sixty years old.
He's got sixty now.
And I got from Cuskey, that we got forty. And I got orange. That usually brings me now forty.
One twenty, twenty and five, then.
One twenty, twenty and five?
Yeah. I'll compromise that part. Josh?
Yeah, we gotta get somewhere, so.
Yeah. The budget doesn't pass, I'm gonna just go back to last year's budget. It won't be a hard head, so.
No.
So make those changes, any other changes you direct me to make before Tuesday?
You guys comfortable with the fund balances where they're at with moving stuff around?
I always hoped they're better in the end, and what they are, huh?
Yeah.
Except. Road department's running on empty.
Yes, it is.
That bothers me. I don't have a solution.
It's gonna have to cut expenses.
Really keep a, really close eye on what people spend. Try to get those home, keep, keep as much, keep as much in as kitty as you can going through the year.
That's every department.
Yep.
Well, I don't think we're. Gonna do anything else.
Yeah, we'll make those changes, I will email you the final numbers. And we will get going on getting ready for Tuesday then.
That's it.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Tammy, and for all the effort and all the. It's gonna disaster this year, but we'll make the best of it. I appreciate all your extra effort this year.
Doug, did you need any, did you have any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah.
Thanks.
It's not been easy for you either.
All right, anything else for all the discussion?
I don't think so, I think that is all I had, um. As far as the budget presentation, is there anything else you guys want added to the budget presentation? I think, um, I'm gonna talk to Adam and go over the spreadsheet that I sent you guys. Comparing expenditures and revenues over the last three years. Maybe see if we can incorporate that in there a little bit, kind of show where, why we are where we are. Um, anything else you guys?
Make sure you put the ambulance in the pie graph.
Yeah, I have already talked to him about that, so.
You did?
Yeah. Because that's the additional seventy five percent levy, so that does make a difference too.
Yep.
And the hospital, there's, was in the paper, one point five.
One point five what?
I mean, asking, I thought I read it in the paper.
I didn't, didn't see that.
They'll, they'll be here next week to present it, I think.
Okay. Will that be before or after ours, our public?
Probably before.
Sounds good.
Cause ours isn't till eight thirty.
All right. Board discussion, Jack.
Boy help tomorrow, and next Monday we have recertification, KC DC. And the hospital wants some cases, uh, not KC DC, um, early childhood. The May twenty second, this hospital wants people from, uh, early childhood to go to their recertification. For, uh, assuming going healthy kids, I guess.
Okay. Anything else? Roger?
Um, I've been asked about what we're doing with the dog ordinance, and I said we were too busy to look at it lately, but. Maybe we ought to put it in agenda for a future time.
Yeah, maybe, can you add that to your list of our? Stuff to discuss, not our discussion, like with the two boards we gotta fill. Make a note for that, maybe.
Just, just remind when you have a slack agenda, we should. Get, we get to this, get this budget out of.
Yeah, after the budget, for sure. You have anything else, Roger?
No, I'm just dreaming.
Josh?
Um, I had a tech services bureau meeting last Wednesday, um. That's been kind of the quarterly or. Biannually, almost, um, meeting, kind of discussing different, um, opportunities with a. Service called, um, Arctic Wolf. And they're working with the state here now to kind of provide, um. And they're working with the state right now to kind of provide, um, access to grant dollars to. Provide that to the counties. There's some county expenses going to be involved with it, but I believe they were talking, um, potentially working with. The Iowa Department of Homeland Security to get a grant for at least, I think, eighty percent. But this new product called Arctic Wolf is, is a more robust security program. Just to kind of update you on our, our, uh, network and, and computer security and stuff to combat the ongoing attacks and. And things that have been going on with cyber stuff lately. So they did a presentation on that and, and, um. Seemed like a pretty good program. Other than that, today we have economic development at four o'clock. At the office here in town. Other than that. Calls about the taxes and stuff, so.
Yeah. Doug already mentioned it, but we had the waste man, because it's Waste Management Association meeting last week. Had EMS meeting last Tuesday. And, um. It was a good meeting overall. There is some concern about the, I mean, I think everyone has a concern about the employees that are paying the portion for family health insurance. But with that being such a new department, their wages were very heavily based on what benefits were included. And the changes we made don't have any impact on our other funds, since that's a separate EMS fund, so. The dollars that are saved there just stay with EMS for providing services, so. I guess food for thought, but.
EMS is going to do two-hundred-and-fifty dollars too. You have your separate board.
Well, the, what I'm saying is that the dollars that would be contributed from the employees, which would reduce the budget, those dollars just stay with EMS. They don't, they don't go back into the general fund or anything like that.
General fund.
So, so it's.
So could your, I'm saying your board would make different decisions than our board.
Their board doesn't make decisions. They're just an advisory board.
For changes, but, but there was, um, some questions from some of the members if there was a possibility to be on the agenda here to ask for. Pay increase to compensate for that, because, um, those dollars are still in that fund. And, and their wages were heavily based on the benefits that were associated with it being so new.
I think everybody's wages are based on that.
Everybody does.
I think you're opening a can of worms.
Same things, and we've, we heard that how many times? Well, our whole pay program.
Yeah. I've been looking at that for twenty-five years.
Yeah, so if you do that, you do that for one, you're gonna have to do it for all, everybody else too.
Just sharing food for thought.
Maybe next year there'll be more money to, to fix some of those sites, but for this year, I guess that'll be what it's gonna be.
Yeah, well, and that's why I said those, those dollars stay in that account. It's a separate fund. It's not, not going anywhere else. Those dollars are to support the costs of running the ambulance service only, um. So. Yeah, um. Then, yeah, I don't think I have anything else that hasn't been touched on already, so.
Go to the dinner.
All right, is there a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion to carry to unanimous at eleven forty-three. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.